...for August the 22nd. Please rise for our invocation followed by our pledge of allegiance. We welcome Mr. Braden Zollis.
Lord, we pray. Heavenly Father, we know that without you we cannot do much. So yes, always, but to be with us. We thank you for today and for all the great blessings that you give us. We ask that you guide us, our council and say in all that you do. We especially ask that you keep us mindful that all the things done here are for the better of the town and the benefit of the citizens. Help us to work together to move the city forward. Thus we ask in your son's name, Jesus.
Amen.
Amen.
I declare the use of the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, the legislature is to be Texas, one state, under God, one and invisible.
Thank you. We do have a form for tonight's meeting. All members of the Forests City Council are in attendance. At this time, I would like to open the floor for any citizens' comments. This is the opportunity for citizens to have five minutes to address the council. I think I have one right here, and if you would come over to the podium and please state your name and...
My name is Vic Wade. I've just, I've been in Forests, I guess, two or three years now, but since I've been here, I've attended two of the audits, and I talked to y'all about a year and a half ago or so after the first audit, then I sat through this last audit. And when they talk about the financing for the cities and they tell us that there's no money in the general fund, that last year there was no money in the general fund. From what I understand, there was supposed to have been 1.1 million dollars in there, and they were, y'all were 100,000 in debt. And in the audit, I read, the reason I came last year is because I read in the audit where it said that the city needed to be looking at this on a daily basis. I mean, it says it black and white. Y'all need to be looking at this on a daily basis because the finances are so bad. That was last year. Well, this year I sat through the audit about, oh, that about three weeks ago. Well, I'm thinking, well, surely somebody's done something about it by now. And then I sit through the audit, and still there's, there's no money in the, in the general fund. There was supposed to be 1.1 million dollars, and now the city's 400,000 in debt and want to raise taxes. And like the lady, as a homeowner, I'm thinking, holy smokes, this is pretty bad. And like the lady that came up here last week, or two weeks ago, at the city council meeting, this is affecting the poor people. That's who that affects if the city is not managed properly. That's, that's what's happening. If the management is not being handled properly, something needs to be done about it. The, the poor people are being affected, and when I talked to the auditors that night when the audit was going on, and I asked them, I said, "Look, first, the, a year and a half ago, the city was 100,000 in debt, no money in the general fund. Now, they're 400,000 in debt, debt, no, nothing in the general fund." I said, "How much longer does the city got?" He said, "Oh, probably about two years, the way they're going." I said, "Okay, well, what's that gonna affect? Does that affect the bonds or what?" He said, "No, the bonds are protected." He said, "Who it affects is the people that work for the city. If there's mismanagement, the people that work for the city ought to be up here, standing up here, raving mad." Because he said, "There's about two years left, and the city of Paulings are gonna start being affected." I'm just telling you, there's something wrong, and something not, somebody should do something about it, and I'm pretty upset as being a homeowner in this city. Thank you.
Any other citizens' comments?
My name is Debbie Sagal. I've been here 17 years. I'm from San Antonio, and I'm here this evening because, I don't know how many of y'all have been over to the city cemetery lately, but it's horrible. It's embarrassment to the city. It's, it's terrible. It's not maintained, it's not mowed. I have to, I have made several phone calls to Ms. Turner, I've sent her emails, I've written letters to the Russell County News about it. It, it needs to be maintained. The streets are terrible over there, the roads are terrible. There's stuff, people put things out in grave sites, and they're there for months and months and months. Of course, the sun beats down on it, and it's just terrible. It looks terrible. You drive by, the weeds in the spring, it's horrible. You know that the wildflowers are beautiful, and a lot of those graves, that's the only flowers that they have during the year because their families are either deceased or, you know, there's just no way there to take care of them. But they could go around some of those, and at least where there aren't any wildflowers, mow that, and trim it, and trim the trees, and water. My husband goes over there once a week. We live about 10 miles out of the city, and he comes in once a week and has coffee over at Olivia's, and he'll go in and he'll turn on the water, we brought hoses in, the hoses disappear. He turns on the water, it runs for maybe an hour, hour and a half, and he goes back over and turns the water off. He doesn't let it run for days, so it's not like he's wasting money. And he doesn't, you know, we don't live close by, so it's not like he can come in here every day or come in a couple more times a day and change those hoses. So, you know, my concern is that it's, it's an eyesore for the city, and it reflects very, very badly on the city council, because y'all are the ones that are in charge of this. I don't know how much money is allotted for it. I read last year in the paper where I think money was cut for parks and recreation, and of course, because it's not a facility for the living, although it really is, because it's for the people who are left behind, but it seems like the cemetery gets the last. You know, they're the last ones to be maintained. I just want to bring your two girls' attention, and I'd appreciate it if you would do something about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On that note, I would like to make a statement, not as the mayor, but as a citizen who has lived here for a very, very long time concerning the cemetery as well. And it is an embarrassment. I get regular complaints, and so I know looking ahead to your agenda or our agenda for Tuesday night, that is going to include the Parks Department, which I believe will cover the cemetery as well. We need to see what we can do. You drive in and you hit pothole after pothole, there's actually a headstone of a Texas Ranger that we pulled up by a trail that has been neglected. If you drive through it, there's also, and I have pictures to back them up, there's a picture of a metal pipe coming out of the ground that anybody could run into. So please, council, I ask that we start looking into what our plan for maintenance of the cemetery will be. It seems like it's last on the list for everything, but when you have funerals, and I know there's gonna be a big funeral come Saturday, we would like to be able to show it off and show that we have some respect for it. So, thank you very much, and again, I ask the council to look into that as we go forward with our budget concerning the parks. Thank you. Any other citizens' comments?
Mayor, I have a comment. Going off of what you said, yes, it is important that we will look into the budget for all of our departments, but I, you know, as a council member, I would appreciate any information that is brought to you by citizens, so we can talk about it prior to citizens coming to meetings and letting us know.
They've been forwarded in the past, they've been forwarded in the past, but yes, when they, when they contact me, I do. Thank you. Any other citizens' comments? Okay. If not, moving on to item 1A, our second hearing on the 2019 proposed property tax rate for the city of Forests.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I have before you in your packet, we have a notice of 2019 tax year proposed property tax budget. The proposed tax is .4440. The preceding year was 4431. Our effective tax rate is .4440. Our staff is recommending the proposed tax to be .4440. It is appeared in the paper, it is a requirement that we have two public hearings. If you look at the second page, it talks about what the increase will be. The increase at a tax rate of .4440 will be in addition to increased revenue of 55,518 dollars.
Any questions for our council members? If not, I will open the floor to any citizens' comments pertaining to the notice of the 2019 tax year proposed property tax rate. If not, this public hearing is now completed at 6:00. It started at 6:09. Thank you. Moving on to old business, consideration and action, item 2A, consideration and action to approve minute minutes for the regular scheduled meeting on August the 8th of 2019. I'll give the council a moment, and if there's no questions or changes, I will entertain a motion.
I have a question on, on executive session, on the last one, it says that I was absent. Can you check on that, please?
I believe you were here.
I was here, but was I in the restroom or? Because I remember, I remember being here, but...
Need to make a change there. You weren't here.
Any other changes that you can see?
And then, okay, I'm listening. Did you see that?
Yes.
The what?
Ms. Martinez was absent.
He was here, but he wasn't being posted.
Okay. Any other questions or changes? Okay, then I'll entertain a motion.
Make the motion.
I have a motion by Helen Martinez. Do I have a second? By Ms. Martinez. Second? Second? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Moving on to item 2B, consideration and action to approve the minute meetings for the special council meeting on August the 13th, 2019. I want to approve. I have a motion on the floor to approve the minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Moving on to item 3A, our spectrum update, and I think we're excited about that one.
We are, actually. Mayor and city council members, I actually spoke to Mr. Barry King, he has the counsel for Spectrum. We discussed some numbers, but unfortunately, we have not come to a set number that we can share with the council. What we will be doing is we're going to be scheduling a third meeting with them so that we can go ahead and have hopefully a final meeting, which will give us some good numbers that we can bring to the council. So we're moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If everything goes good or well, where will those funds be going to? General fund?
Should, should go back to the water department. That's what we've been...
Okay, that would happen several weeks ago, and so we can allocate where the funds come from, and distribute between all of the funds.
Council makes that call?
Council made that decision.
So when that, when that money comes in, we will put that on the agenda too.
We can do that.
See where it goes.
Yes, ma'am. I know that last one that they were down, we had a really good meeting, because I know that one of the subcontractors spoke to Ms. Turner and gave her some numbers, so I had put that on an email to Mr. King. We discussed the numbers today, but we couldn't agree on any number to bring to the council. So that's when we decided, ma'am, that we would go ahead and have a third meeting, so that we can discuss hopefully a final number that we can bring to the council and bring whatever terms and agreements that we would have to do in order to get it done.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to item 3B, USDA grant 2019 water improvement. Our city manager, Helen Martinez?
Yes, we have Helen here, who's our great coordinator, and please, we should say USDA loan, because we can get a grant this time, but Helen will go over the components of that grant and which you know we have to do some things for the closing.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, council members, mayor. So we have received a letter of conditions from Betty and Mr. Valdez, the USDA, for $2,465,000. And this letter, or these monies will be divvied up. There's different components of the project, and again, it is a water loan, not a, a grant. The first component is the new water well at Plaza that's been out of service, helped me out here for two years. The rehabilitation isn't feasible, and we need to build a new water well on the same site as where Plaza built is. B Street Waterwell Rehabilitation is over 10 years old, and it's past due for rehabilitation. There's a temporary booster station that's required. The Oak Hills Water Service Interconnect, it's a supplementary water supply for the city, configured to supplement both pressure planes, and it's located on CR 301 behind Randolph, Randolph Road's Federal Credit Union. The hospital ground storage tank also needs rehabilitation. It's been cited by TCU. There's holes in the roof, needs coating and paint. There's paint deterioration, rust that needs to be taken care of. A new aerator at Hospital Boulevard is needed. The existing aerator is in need of rehabilitation. The design does not allow for rehabilitation without modifications. We're recommending that a new aerator will allow for maintenance. So this total is 2,465,000. We're hoping construction can start in the fall of 2019 and complete by the summer of 2020. And Ms. Turner and I will be in Sagin tomorrow, meeting with the USDA expectations, Betty Sotomayor, to talk about the letter of conditions, what things we still need to do, and also to talk about closing.
What is the timeline of payment, payments on this?
Forty years. How many years?
Yeah, it's 40 years. I would like to ask if you could give more details on the letter of conditions.
I may have a revision in mind.
Yes, it's 40 years. The annual payment is 102,397 dollars, and the interest rate is 2.75 percent.
Is that on page four of 24, number nine? Is that the...
Page four of 24. She's looking at the letter of condition.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm looking at the letter. It's three of 24?
No, it's four of 24.
You're looking at the letter of conditions?
Letter of conditions.
Okay. On my three of 24, under section two, long term?
No, I have page four of 24, number nine.
Voice first.
Service reserve.
Reserve.
Okay, yes, but it's the same thing. That talks about the reserves. It talks about, in addition to 102,937 dollars that we need to pay out, we also need to keep a debt service reserve, and that's 85331 per month. And then the short-lived, on 9B, we also have to keep 136,715 dollars in short-lived asset reserve. All of our loans with USDA and grants have had the same stipulations.
Any other questions?
I have some questions. If our water reserves is doing good, why can't we utilize some, some, some of those funds and bring down that payment?
The reason why we keep section two interest rates is because it's a long-term, and they want you to build up your system, and this year they hit you in the beginning. So it's designed to be a 40-year loan, which is the average loan is 40 years for most of their components. If it's gonna be a loan, it's a 40-year component. Yeah, Raul?
Say the last name.
He comes every year and does a report as part of the USDA, a great part of it, that he comes every year to say if our income is enough to carry the system, but they want us to keep a debt tank reserve as well. And so that's why every year, we see at the beginning of the year, January, our calendar year, we have him come out and do an assessment, not only on water rates, but also on our sewer rates. And that we had to increase them several times because we were not charging what was fair and equitable to maintain the system.
And this last go-around, which was about six to eight months ago, when he came and addressed the, the rates, we decided we didn't need to increase them at that time. So they still need to be reassessed, you know, going to next fiscal year. But we, we got through this fiscal year without, without having to raise the rates.
My question is, if we have a good balance debt on the reserves? I mean, you know...
I mean, that would be an issue with whoever prepares the budget and council. If that money could be utilized to pay it down?
Right, that's...
Yeah.
200,000 a year?
But keep in mind that the reserve, that the monies in, in the enterprise fund are part of the pooled cash, so those monies need to be considered to cover general fund if you need to.
Right, 'cause, 'cause I'm on a different island here. We're gonna be talking about water and street.
You have some, um, you have your treats.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much, Rowan.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 3C, our city managers' report.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. In your package you have items, I'm just gonna highlight some of these for you. Okay, so we've been working on code enforcement, and we're launching a more aggressive code enforcement campaign to address some debris in the general appearance of the city. Therefore, we're assisting the police department, the warrant officer that we have actually done this year. We're working very hard on code enforcement, so they will, they'll be out, and they'll be getting tickets, because the police department can write tickets where our current code enforcement officer cannot. Attach it to the flyer that's gonna be in the water bills, Facebook, and everything to talk about, give people an opportunity to help them clean up. Now, we do this 60 already, 60 residents every month, leaves on the second Saturday of the month. This is a quarterly pickup, and so we have it for the 21st, I said the 17th, it's actually the 21st. You have to call in by the 17th and the 19th, so we're gonna have a major Saturday pickup. So everybody comes, and you can put your things out. It's gonna go out in the water bills to remind citizens, so we're trying to do that. It's only for residents, it's not necessarily for commercial, but we're trying to give people an opportunity to clean up, to get rid of things, not just to have to get the truck and take it over there to the sewer plant, but actually just come to curfew, this is curfew side bulk pickup. So we have those days we want to advertise, because before we send out the police to send the tickets, the warning is we want to give people an opportunity to clean up at no cost as part of the quarterly report, the quarterly cleanup that the public has to do. So I've included that flyer for you. And if you ask, if anybody asks you, they just need to call in, leave their address, and then the second Saturday they pick up, but this is a monthly bulk pickup. The hike and bike ramp went in, we're really excited about that, I believe. They will be meeting next week for the first time, the committee. They even did a little video, it's kind of cute, to see the hike and bike, and I think they're having something in September as a announcement about the hike and bike and the things that they plan on doing, hoping they can move forward. The Wildcats, okay, so we met with the Wildcats about an agreement. Because the fields weren't ready December of 2018, they had to get a location, because they make schedules kind of early, schools work earlier than we do. And so they've actually signed up and got some dates in with the school district. They have four home games, they only have less than 100 children, but they did say they are ready to, and signed an agreement, and probably about the first of this year of 2020, they have been ready to sign the agreement to come in. So they said, "Thank you for the opportunity to play," and they're looking forward to it. So we're gonna have that agreement in place with the Wildcats.
Of course, I want to know about the Wildcats football. May I, or council, help refresh me, my mind, concerned football fields and the concession? Didn't Mr. Shaw from Harden say it will be completed?
I think he said it'd be ready this summer, but they needed to be completed by December of last year, we weren't completing by...
I'm a, I'm a little bit disciplined in Sean, to be honest with you, to the council, and that I don't know what is, if he has any financial issues or problems or whatever, but it's getting to probably, I don't know, I don't know. Council needs to focus on his, on his contracts and his deals that he's been, because he came before the council and asked him, "Are the fields gonna be completed all this?" He said, "Yes, in a couple weeks." So I have to say, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Ms. Martinez?
The downtown parking lots are coming to closes, starting the second parking lot. That's the one that's behind Movie Theater. So in partnership with the EDC, we thought we had like a little celebration, we're all done, and Republic was willing to host it for us and could get the event. So we're hoping to do something after the, after the Labor Day holiday, on Wednesday, September 4th. So you have a simple flyer, and we're gonna put together an official thing, but we're gonna ask everybody to come out, and we did sidewalks, we've done parks, and we're gonna do parking lots. And EDC is really proud, and I think that's one of the things we've shown for goodwill with the businesses and FDC and those projects, so we're hoping to do that on September 4th, 11 o'clock, between 11 and 1. The workshop for the 4A on Saturday had to be postponed because the chairman of 4A wasn't able to make it because he has some funeral services he has to make. And at 10, actually, he has two of them on Saturday. So we're gonna schedule another time, actually, our meeting next Wednesday, and so when we do that, I'll ask them for another date and time. On that same note, we were able to send flowers to the family for both of those parents that will be happy as representing the city. The budget agenda, I apologize for not posting it in time for the meeting last Tuesday, but you should have it in your desk. The budget agenda for the 27th, we have the IT presentation, staff salaries, benefits, streets, parks, and fleet. We are asking for a special meeting on 30 to 29th, so that we can approve the funding graph budget and the annexation agreement. That's the end of my report.
Any questions, Mayor?
I have a question on the, excuse me, on the code compliance, and this may not pertain to what you just reported, but probably even a year ago, maybe, there were a couple of places that I had reported that needed to be done something to, and as I passed by these places, there's still nothing done, and it looks terrible.
But income of vacant lots?
I would say so, one of them.
So vacant lots, we can't go on private property to clean unless we're ready to?
Well, excuse me, let me reframe that. It's not a vacant lot, there's things there.
Yes, and so what we're trying to do before we come out with the code enforcement and start sending letters and giving citations, is to give the homeowners an opportunity to put that stuff to the curb and look how big it can take it away.
So how many letters do we have to send out, or should we have fined these people already?
You have to send out at least three. You have to send out at least three letters. They have to come into noncompliance, and then you can actually go to court, then they have to go to court, and then you can actually start fining them.
That would be at our expense to take them to court, correct?
It's not such an expense, but what we want to be able to do...
That wouldn't help.
What we want to be able to do is actually, that's why we're having Jesse, the warrant officer, to be able to write these code enforcement, send out the letters, and then he can write the tickets. So that's what's really important, and we're working with the court, and they're prepared, so that we're gonna start an aggressive approach. And so it was a police chief's idea to make sure that we advertise the bulk pickup, so that we can give people an opportunity to clean up. I mean, we can't say, "Oh, I didn't know," but give them an opportunity. Sometimes it's kind of hard to get these things. If you look at the flyer, some of the things, refrigeration, air conditioning, those kind of things, it's kind of hard sometimes to get to the dump. What we can take, what we can't take, those kind of things. So we're gonna see if we can take a more aggressive approach.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mrs. Turner? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 4A, consideration and action to approve street closures for the Knights of Columbus March for Life. Councilman Jimenez, and I know we have representatives from the Knights of Columbus.
I'm here, City Council. My name is Joe Rodriguez, the fourth of the Knights of Columbus, and we're here to make... And we're here to extend an open invitation to our 10th annual Respect for Life to the City Council and to you, Mayor. And we have a presentation of our invitation to be read to you all and approval for the march.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Richard Abrae. And we're the Knights of Columbus Council, Chief of State 41, of Forestville, Texas. I invite everyone in our community to participate in the 10th annual Respect for Life March Saturday, October 5th of 2019. The month of October is Respect for Life Month. We gather to bring critical awareness, positive spiritual support, and educational information to our community. We march for an end to child abuse, elderly abuse, suicide, assisted suicide, euthanasia, the death penalty, even trafficking, abortion, and all saying against humanity. We ask you to show your support and join us in a peaceful and reverent march. Our events for the day begin with us gathering in the Knights Columbus Hall, 1519 30th Street, Forestville, Texas, 78114. The doors will be opened at 7:00 a.m. Get speakers that they attend. The Respect for Life will step off at 19:15 a.m. Will step off at 19:15 a.m. And proceed to the Sacred Heart Church, 1009 11th Street, Forestville, where we will celebrate the holy mass. Children of all ages are encouraged to attend. All events will take place during this night. Thank you and God bless.
Thank you so much. So we are looking at the closure of.
We have a police escort, we don't close the streets. We've already spoken to the chief, and they've helped us out the last few years with the police escort.
Okay, so, okay, that sounds good. And so our agenda item though says to approve the street closure, so we can go ahead and table that. So that we have to counsel him, Jimenez, since it's your item.
Just to approve the Knights of Columbus.
I make a motion to approve it in March.
We're going to officially close the street, but people can't buy it for years. We have to store people, teach our people, and so this way it is like a demarcation to have the march. They're going to detour people around them.
So what's the proper wording on the, for the agenda item? We'll defer that over to our attorney.
Mr. Turner, basically, will streets be closed, or you can just utilize barriers, or?
No, they won't actually be physically closed, but they do deter, they do redirect the people from traffic so that they allow them to march outside.
When we do the escort, like they use it, they do escort like they do for a funeral, they use this block of the street to let us through to go through March, and then they just leave the dogs to the church to escort.
It's a very closed.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, basically, to utilize the services of the Forestville Police Department supporting them to their destination.
We could just eliminate street closure.
Okay.
Yes, and to utilize the services of the police, of course, hopefully.
During your march.
Yes. Would it be better for streets to be closed in that area?
If we do, we'd have to get permits, and we haven't done it, we've never done that before, to close the streets, because then we have to go to Texas to get permits and stuff like that for the street closure.
Can they go down Third Street?
Yeah.
Because it's Third Street, and so technically, it's Texas Street, it's not necessarily.
I think the least expensive is just to indicate that you're going to utilize the services of a police escort with a Forestville Police Department.
And we'll check in with the chief, and we'll forward y'all an email or something, just letting y'all know ahead of time, within that time, before we do our march.
Okay.
How about this, I make a motion with a police escort for the Knights of Columbus March for Life.
Or to assist, to assist, literally, to assist with March for Life.
Did Secretary get that?
Yes.
So I do have a motion by Councilman Jimenez on that.
Well, second.
And seconded by Councilwoman Cat 2. Any citizens' comments? Excuse me. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Moving on to item 4B, consideration and action for 2019-002, amending Chapter 54 of Solid Waste Collection, Section 41, Schedule 1, charges in the City of Forestville, Texas, related to Title V, Public Works Code of Ordinances, providing for a savings plaza and repeating conflicting ordinances and legislation.
Thank you, Mayor. Right, so the City Council, every year, from Republican letters, including your package, we get one every year, about August. And so what the letter basically says is that they're raising your prices and they're letting us know. We can choose to absorb that, or we can choose to pass it on to the consumer. For the last few years, we have absorbed it, because we actually raised the rates on the water and sewer. And so we opted not to increase the rates. However, this time, looking at our budget, we can't keep absorbing the evil reason, this cost. This cost is passed on to us. Staff is recommending that you pass it on to the consumer. As they have increased in their gas, their employees, whatever the reason is, it's there. And typically, we have a 12%, 10% to 12% administrative cost that we add on to as we pass the third. So what I have is a new rate with a 10% administrative cost. The old rate and the new rate, and the difference is $2.072. So do you see the different items? Now, this listed the residential, there's a home list, if you want the commercial as well. I don't think you're really concerned about the residential. And so bottom line, it's $2.072, so one of those little carts more a month, $32.64 per year. If you need extra carts, if they have a special gallon pickup, the second cart, those kind of things. These are the highlight ones that we use most of the time. There's a difference, I don't have the old rate and the new rate. Now, if you remember your audits, we did, garbage is something that you should make money off of. We've given discounts and things such as that. We're not making what we should have, what we budgeted for, because these rates are a lot higher. Our entertaining questions made by Council, but you may have.
So bottom line is, as this proposal goes through, then it would go into effect October 1?
Yes, ma'am.
That would be a different addition of $2.072 per month bill.
Yes, ma'am.
Any questions by the council?
I have some questions.
That's a lot of money.
Yes, sir.
I knew it, you ordered it, yes.
That's okay.
Okay. And I agree that that's a lot of funds for the consumer to absorb. Is there any way out?
You can eat it, you can endure the cost, because Republic's going to charge you that fee. So it's just a matter of either who's going to pay it. Either the state is going to take it out of the general fund, which is already suffering, or we have to pay it. I mean, so we can't keep absorbing these fees. Now, I know we've absorbed it before because we raised the rates on the water and sewer, and we didn't do it at that time. But every year, you're going to get a letter that's going to increase the fees.
Because we're considering, you know, it hasn't been approved yet because we're considering raising taxes and then raising fees. Is there any way that we could absorb it through the sewer or the water?
It is garbage, it's refuge. It's associated with the water and sewer, because.
The question is.
No, it's administrative fee, it is not, it's an admin, so it's in your general fund. So the revenue that would come from would be from the general fund. The fund that we pay for would be your general fund, it's not a water or sewer.
We split the cost?
You can charge any portion of that. If you want to say that you want to pay half of the $2.072, it's up to you. I'm just saying, staff is recommending that you pass the cost on, because we can't keep absorbing these costs. Cost of living goes up, you need to pass on, it's not something that we're making up. This is Republic saying that they are, she's going to do that. And we have incurred that cost more than once, more than twice. And your bottom line.
Where are they raising the taxes?
We are passing it.
Does this need to be signed tonight? Is there a deadline that we have to?
It has to be passed before we.
On the budget?
Before your budget, so that we can budget budget, revenue or the expenses.
And can we table it and see what people use, I don't know. So, are you?
If we use the same Republic, there's, I mean, there's no other one that would be cheaper.
You have a contract with Republic, for how long? You have another three years on your contract, you know?
Another three years, Mr. Turner?
I have three years.
Is it one more year?
No, we have three more years. I checked with Terry when he came through, it's three years. We extended it when they asked, when we opened the contract, the last time we did the bulk, and they picked up and they needed an agreement, and you gave them that extension.
Five years.
But in any contract, they're going to have built into, whether it be Republic or Waste Management, they're going to have built in the cost of living increases.
So the options, Council, are to, for the city to continue to cover it, or we can do what is recommended by staff, or split it. So the council can make a decision on those, that you so choose.
Did you say it was $30? I think it was $30.
It has to be done by the time that we finish our budget, which is next week.
Because we have to put in the budget what we have to pay out, and what we anticipate it will be. They send this to us, you see the date of the letter, on August 1st. But again, they send this letter every year. It's just the last few years, staff haven't brought it to you because we did make a major increase on the water, in the nation, we did a major increase on the sewer, and it's all in the water bill, so we thought that would be way too much. But this year, we didn't make any increase on the water or the sewer. But again, as far as our general fund is suffering, that's where it comes from. And so, as we had a conversation in our workshop about eating the fees that are associated with using your credit card, those fees we're eating, and you can't keep eating fees. But no matter what coverage company you have, again, there's going to be a cost of living. Gas prices, insurance, employees, the cost is not in the main.
So, so actually, the benefit of this, it's not going to, unless, the only thing is, unless the city eats it, or the residential people. So as far as the benefit of it, it would be probably to the advantage of the city to, for the consumer, or the residential people to get it, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
But at the same time, you know, that's more money for all these, you know, people that are on budget, people that are elderly, you know.
Were you okay to discount to seniors on their bill? That you gave a discount on their bill? You also have given a discount and frozen for seniors for their taxes as well.
Did that ever go through?
It went through a while ago, years ago. Based on.
I had understood it in, you know, kind of face down, but it is not.
So I'm just, if you want to put it on the agenda for the next, for the special meeting that I ask on the 29th, we can, at that point, you can pass it, but you just need to let us know to pass it on. But either way, though, their prices went up, so we have to let them know how you want to actually pay.
But if we have a contract, we have, actually, we have no choice, correct?
Well, then the problem might be that we have a deadline to approve the budget of next week. And so if we wait, we don't, we won't have the accurate numbers to put in the budget.
If you don't, if you don't have a cost, or give some kind of indication that what I'm going to put in there is not to increase the fee, that we'll have to incorporate paying this fee, because it's like a bill, it's coming. So I'll have to incorporate that into less revenue and a larger expenditure with coverage.
Any other questions by council? Any citizens' comments? If not, I will entertain a motion by council. There is.
I'll make a motion to table it, to see if it's the true amount.
Okay, I have a motion on the force, table item 4B. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Ortiz. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you, table 50. Okay, moving on to item 4C, consideration and action to award the street maintenance program bid. Our city manager has.
Hi, here's the city council, yes, here we go.
Good evening, council, and thanks to that, I'm here to answer questions, it's your pleasure.
I know that we have gone out for bids on our street maintenance program. Can you give us a little, I know we have them in front of us too. Can you roll over the bids and what you have come across and what you are suggesting?
Okay, excuse me, I've had a bit of a cough, so I'm going to try to do this without talking too much. The, when we opened the bids, we read the monetary bid amount aloud. And on that day, all in construction was the low bidder, $469,152.40. That's the low bid. The others were higher. The way the specifications were written, the bid would be awarded based on a scored proposal. And it's weighted where 50% of the monetary budget is considered. And the other 50% is, are items that the bidders were asked to submit with their bid documents. When we scored the bid doc, all of the submitted documents, the order of, the order of the award changed. And the low bidder, or the highest score was for Arnold Jones, and not the lowest monetary bidder, all in construction. Some of the things that were evaluated for the other 50% of the score were safety ratings in logs, resumes with personnel experience, safety policy, whether the contractor had vendor holds and liens. We asked them for projects listed that were similar in scope. We asked them for rep, recommendation letters from their previous clients. We also asked for a schedule, current workload that they had, had a work under contract, and the applicable equipment that they had at their disposal. So all in construction with their low bid, they scored very low in one of those sections. And that resulted in Arnold Jones jumping ahead of them on the scored proposal. Arnold Jones did a very thorough job of submitting all of the information requested in the bid specification. The issue that you have in front of you is, the difference in the monetary bid amount is $88,558. My position as, as the engineering record, I put out the specifications, so I have to follow those and make a recommendation based on the scored proposal. So that's why I have, in my letter, I've recommended that you award the contract to Arnold Jones limited partnership at that amount. I, and I believe that you have an option to go another direction if you so desire, but I would recommend that you consult with your city attorney before making that final decision. Okay, yes, sir.
Okay, all in construction, I understand, did a lot of work on roads in La Verdia.
They have completed a similar project under us for the city of La Verdia last month.
Did you have any problems with it?
I did not hear, I was not the project manager for that project, but I did not hear any negative feedback from it.
So I would think that everything went well then.
I would suppose so, yes, sir.
The quality of the roads, how are these, have you seen them?
I have not seen them personally, no.
No, but then, I got a call, state, state coach.
Do you have questions?
I've had a question for our attorney. Okay, if we went with the lowest bidder.
The way that, Councilman, the way that your bid was written down, you are allowed to either get the lowest or get the. get the lowest or whatever is more advantageous to the city of Florisville, so that means that you don't necessarily have to take the lowest bidder.
Or the highest.
My committee is turning around and making sure that wording got written in there. Thank you.
Yeah, the score proposal is basically a best value proposal for the city, but opens up some options for the city to evaluate the bid submitted and the contractors that submitted.
Can you possibly tell the Council how the voting came to be, and how it was that your recommendation was for Mr. Jones?
Just basically on the score proposal. The criteria that I used was published within the specifications, and I followed them to the best of my judgment.
Exactly, and that's not when the other one came out to help?
Yes, we have another person at MS office that did another score proposal. We offered the opportunity for the city to do that, but they chose to go with what we had done.
Council?
Okay. So, from asking earlier, asking questions, there was some other paperwork that they didn't turn in. I don't know if they didn't turn it in, that's the reason they were lower. There was a couple of things that they didn't turn in that the other ones did, but from my understanding, they did a really good job in La Verdia, you know, and for $88,000 cheaper to the city of Florisville, I would recommend to go with the lowest bidder.
Any other comments or questions by Council?
I have a question. Did they just put a bid on total or individual, like...
Per street, sir?
There's a unit price bid, based on materials and the item of work.
So it's all together?
Yeah. So all asphalt payments together, excavation is together, mobilizations, I think there's like nine or 10 bid items.
Yeah, it's over here in the back, but I can see it.
Any other questions? Any citizens' comments? So legally, we do not have to take the lowest bidder, but...
That is correct.
Yeah.
It's up to the Council, which one you believe would be in the best interest of the city.
And because of the crucial aspect of the conditions of our roads, I would ask the Council to look into the best quality for most of the roads, most of the streets. Okay.
History.
Any other comments or questions by the Council members?
I just have the comment, I mean, given our previous conversations regarding the other items on the agenda, and talking about budget and constraints, I think we need to be very careful when we're picking our, you know, making our next moves, and just because a company is getting lower than the others, you know, I don't see any outstanding warning signs up, we may need to take the lowest bidder.
Councilman?
So, all in one construction, their quality was good in La Verdia?
All I can tell you is that I did not hear anything that went wrong with that project. I was not the project manager. And the project manager that was running that job is no longer with MS anymore.
And according to your scoring sheet, they came in second? Is that correct?
All in construction, yes.
Yes, they came in second.
Yes.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
To go with the lowest bidder for the street maintenance program, the all-in?
All-in construction. I have a motion on the floor to accept the bid of all-in construction. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Ortiz. Any citizens' comments? If not, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you so much.
Mr. Turner, would you like me to inform the contractors of the results?
Please.
Probably so, come on.
How quickly will they start on that project?
We'll have to, I'll have to revise and update all the contract documents based on the bid submissions, deliver it to the contractor for them to execute it, have them get it back to either me or a straight from the city to be executed by the city, then we'll have a, we'll issue a notice to proceed and have a pre-construction conference and get them started. Construction substantial completion in the specification is stated in 60 days, so they, basically, they have 60 days to say, hey, we think we're done, come, walk the job, we'll walk the job, do our visual observation, give them a short punch list of items that need to be completed, then they'll have a short time to finish up the job.
Okay. Can we recommend what road could be first?
It was, I said it somewhere, Plum Street.
Plum Street, see, there's a problem with that.
Yeah, Plum Street was a part.
Okay. We can, I can inform them that you all know what they have Plum Street numbers.
I think the order that we talked about was Plum D and then G.
You have a list, right?
Yes, they are, yeah. Okay. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 4D, consideration action to amend the FEC bylaws behind Mr. President Solis.
Mayor, Council, President Solis representing FEC. For some time, as you well know, we've been having trouble filling board vacancies. But FEC has not had the same level of problem as still who have some. I believe we need to remove any unnecessary impediments for us to be able to do a better job in filling those boards. We propose to remove what is the only impediment in FEC and that's term limits. Right now, we require that any member having served six years consecutively must be out for two years to be eligible again. This limitation serves no useful purpose. We all serve at the pleasure of the Council, we can be replaced by the Council at any time for a cost or no cost. Thus, this change will in no way have a negative impact on the Council's powers. The FEC board met on 12 August and voted unanimously to eliminate any mention of term limits from Section 302 in bylaws, which is where it's covered. However, to complete this section, the Council needs to approve a motion, because we're here to ask for your approval. Again, this section will in no way limit your authority for appointing and/or removing board members. Section 312 clearly spells that we serve at the pleasure of the Council and may be removed at any time for a cost or no cost. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Well, it seems like it's in black and white, so, Council, do we all have any questions for Mr. President Solis?
I'll make, I'll vote to that.
Well, okay. And any citizens' comments pertaining to that? Okay. If not, I have a motion and a second on the floor to approve the changes as recommended by the FEC. All those in favor, please raise your right hand.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Moving on to item 4D, consideration action regarding the city of Florisville becoming certified in the Film Friendly Texas Program administered by the Texas Film Commission Chairman Mr. Roy Iger, and you can definitely see him coming up for the podium. I thought he was getting ready to start filming.
I'm the head of the mayor and council members, I'm most here pressing. I'm representing the FEC in regard to bringing the term friendly city to Florisville. As you all know, we already passed the first part, and unfortunately, you have a second part, where the bylaws have been already established and written down by the term to be certified. We're in step two, we should give you the, if you give up your cover tonight, then we'll be able to move forward to get into the database so the filmmakers and stuff, and TV guys and so on, they'll be able to reach out into our database and make selections from there to do some filming in there. As you know, page two, it tells you the amount of money that is spent, there were 1.4 billion dollars in production in Texas, and the total production job had been over 153,000, and we don't share enough of that business. The return, the investment, is about 530 percent for every dollar they spend, they bring back. The impact on the local community is worth it, and you can see that we're $350,000 in independent future assets spent in Texas in 18 days and so on. So, on page three, then you have the outline of the portos and the guideline for the framing for the city of Florisville, where the city manager, it would be the controlling authority of the plan and the program, or the firm, we have to go to the city and pay the application fees and so on, and the usual real estate for any police officer known by the month they paid for those, the firm companies paid for all the expenses and certificates and certificate of insurance, and hold on this, so the 12 items in there, they're all being reviewed by the firm and written down and authorized, they make certain legal. So we need authorization from you to agree to this, so we can move forward to start bringing then pictures where they can go into the database for then with bids certified as friendly city fulfillment.
Is this a resolution, or how do we approve this?
Well, the requirement is that once we establish the right, the guideline for, then you all have to give up the blessing, before we can send it to the state with the documentation, and the city manager, so then we get tools and be able to go to the last step, also meeting the pictures of the area and all of that.
So do we approve this now, and then we go forward with it?
Yes.
For the guidelines?
Approve the guidelines, yes. Approve the guidelines.
I'm going to need to approve the, regarding the city of Florisville becoming certified in the Film Friendly Texas Program administered by the Texas Film Commission.
Okay. I have a motion and a second, any citizens' comments? If not, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We look forward to this.
We're going to put Florida deals on the map. We've got a lot of questions.
Thank you.
Colorsful of them.
I like it. Moving on to item 12, consideration and action to approve Resolution 2019-017, for the purpose of, the purpose of this resolution is authorizing representation in IRS matters and delegating authority to execute Form 2848 IRS power of attorney, and I'm going to hand that over to, to try to explain.
Either be it Ms. Turner, this is basically, it came to our attention that possibly a TML has not followed a form that is required, so now, they basically, we needed to do a resolution, we need to designate Ms. Turner having the authority and the power of attorney basically to sign the documentation that needs to be filed with the IRS.
Yes, that would be TML. They're asking us to say that they can represent us, it's the day of some questioning, market can be attorney, market works a lot with TML, and so they're asking us to certify, so they can use it on our behalf, and then they let us know, and that gets signed, so that's what it is, it's a requirement that TML...
So the power of attorney would actually be TML?
TML, actually, Henrianna will have the power of attorney, then you're going to be designating a different individual to negotiate with IRS regarding the possibility that there might be some late penalties.
Because they didn't buy something, I guess.
And I think it's basically going to go back and forth, Mayor and City Council, because even the resolution does indicate that, it's alleged that they might not have followed, so there might be some information that indicates that they have followed it, so there's going to be some back and forth, and that's why there needs to be someone to be designated. First of all, one individual, and it is in the resolution, of Mitchell Williams, and then Ms. Turner, basically, to execute the form. Mr. Williams will be there to negotiate penalties that may have resulted because of the late filing of this form.
The position came from TML, and any forms are going to be asked and signed, I would think, have the attorney to give them priority to sign.
Yes, ma'am.
Can Mitchell Williams is with TML?
Yes.
Any questions by the Council, because this can be confused.
Yes, ma'am, it can, and I think that even if their correspondence, Ms. Turner, correct me if I'm wrong, but even their correspondence indicated that there are cities that have already been given notice that this form was not filed on their behalf. However, the city of Florisville, we have not been given any notice that indicates that it was not filed on our behalf. So this is pretty much safekeeping, just to make sure that everything is going to be taken care of and that we will not suffer the late penalties.
I'll make the motion.
Okay. A motion and a second, any citizens' comments? Okay. All those in favor of accepting the resolution of the city of Florisville authorizing representation in IRS matter and delegating authority to execute the 2848 IRS power of attorney, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you so much. And with no further business on the agenda, this meeting is now concluded at 7:05.